All right, so today we're gonna reconvene. We'll pick up where we left off with Sharrak. But I did wanted to let you guys know, we're going to wrap up today at 4:00 PM. So we'll also have a break or two in between that. But if there's somebody that's here and you wanted to go, you know, push somebody that's unavailable, we're working on dates for continuance if it does go that way. But we'll start with where we left off. And just a reminder, we'll wrap up today at 4:00. I believe it was you, Mr. Kaplan.
No, it was Mr. Orlando's cross-examine.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yep.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I forgot it, you were cross-examining.
Can you go ahead?
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Saka, would you look at, I want to talk about, I think it's number 18. One of the... Is it B...B6? I don't think you have an 18 there. The one I wanted to ask you about is section 350.36B. Let me figure out what number it is.
So it's B7, that's the letter we're working from, which is Mr. Kaplan's letter.
I was working from both letters.
Well, the other letter doesn't have a paragraph 18, Mr. Orlando. That's why I'm referring you to B7.
Thank you. So it doesn't look like you have one of those on yours, but in Mark's letter can...
Is that number 18 in Mark's letter?
Yeah. Now, you mentioned during your direct testimony that you were seeking a waiver from this section, but you didn't think the section applied because you think it's a turn lane and not a deceleration lane. Did I, do I understand your response?
That is correct.
Okay, but may I show you the section? I have my copy of the SADO, but if you have yours.
Yep.
Would you look at section 350-36?
Yes.
Am I correct that it applies both to acceleration, deceleration, and turn lane?
Not this...
Isn't that the title? Read the title.
I can read the title. The section that we are talking about only deals with deceleration lane, it's subsection B.
I understand, but what's the title of the section?
Title of the section is acceleration, deceleration, and turning lanes.
And my question is, that section applies to all three of those, does it not?
That's the title of the section, yes.
So the next one I'd like to ask you about... I believe it's in your letter, B6, I think it's item 16.
16, you said?
And I'm pretty sure it's also 16 in Mark's letter. Which is a waiver request for section 345-311B2.
Yep, okay, I have it.
I'm sorry, B, paragraph 16 is 345-311B1, paragraph 17 is 345-311B2.
B2 is 17, you're correct, I'm sorry.
Well, he referred you to 16, so it's...
I did refer to 16, but I need to make sure I, I want to ask you about the right I'm referring to the, this is in Mark's, B7, item 17, 345-311.B2, stormwater management. And just so that I'm clear, which number is that in your letter, Mr. Saka?
16.
Oh, I know what happened. Thank you, so it's 16 in yours and 17 in Mark's?
That is correct.
But it's the same...
Same section.
Request?
Correct.
Okay, so your request, again, is, and that's, this is in the area that is in the township condemned portion of the connector road, right?
Correct.
And it's because of the elevation, did I understand correctly?
That is correct.
Because of the elevation that, for your finished road, there's not enough depth there to comply with the ordinance, so you want to use smaller pipes? And by using the smaller pipes, you said the code of a 12-inch pipe, or two 12s instead of 115, am I correct?
Yes, we are using 12 inches.
And so is the elevation difference that you need to capture, is it that 3 inches, that's the size of the pipe, or is it greater than that?
No, it is greater than that, that's a separate waiver.
Okay.
That is not this section that you're talking about.
Okay, please explain this one then.
What do you want me to explain? What do you want, what's the question?
The question is, please explain waiver requests number, that's item 17 in exhibit B7, with regard to the minimum cover distance.
So the 17 deals with the size of the pipe. That's the section you want me to explain, right? You said covers, so I'm asking.
I'm, please look at, if you, it's right here if you want to take a look. This is Mark's letter, number 17. It's entitled 345-311B2, stormwater management. That's a section I'd like to...
Yeah, so that section requires one clarification and one modification. The clarification being is that the code allows use of HDP pipe, as far as the township engineer expressly permits that, and it's installed per manufacturer's specification. The second section, second part of the same section, is the minimum size of the RCP pipe. The code specifies, here with me one second, the code specifies, storm pipe, storm sewer should have a minimum diameter of 15 inches for RCP pipe, or 18 inches for aluminum corrugated, etc., as it goes on and describes different sizes and respective materials. RCP pipes are required to be 15-inch in diameter, we are proposing 12 inches. So it's a modification from 15 to 12 for the use of the minimum permitted pipe size. That's the waiver, or that's the modification, rather.
But the statement says the hardship results from the need to maintain minimum, minimum cover over the proposed twin RCP pipe, and that's what I was trying to ask you.
Yes, so what it does is that the existing grade in this area is dictated by what you can disturb within the condemned piece, right? On this side, it's the grade of that basin, or the pound rather. Over that is the road, so the pipe is under, the road's over it. The road, in its current geometry, both vertical and horizontal, is, can accommodate, there's only so much room before you start grading outside the condemned area. Okay, so you cannot just pad up the road, because the road now horizontally has to fit within the condemned property. That's the hardship that I'm talking about, vertically.
So if you did do that, you'd have a hump in the road?
You couldn't do it, you won't be able to do it, because the, because the grades will extend beyond the area condemned.
Okay, and again, that's based on where you've placed the road on the plan. In this area, you can't do that, without this relief. That's the support for your waiver, I'm just trying to understand.
I'll repeat that question, please?
Sure. The request is because the road location is proposed to be where you're showing it, within the condemned township property? If it were, well, just answer that.
The, yes, the waiver is based on the current plans. It shows the road where, yeah, we've gone into this testimony quite a bit, so the, yes, it is subject to the ordinance.
Just give me a minute, I might be done.
Sharrak, do you know whether or not there is any definition in the township, zone, or subdivision ordinance, pardon me, defining the word intersection?
I do not know off the top.
Are you aware of the fact that the law provides that a term that is not defined in the statute is defined in accordance with Webster's dictionary?
Objection.
If he knows.
You're asking of legal concepts.
He's an engineer with a master's degree who has testified repeatedly about the statutes before him.
Yeah, I think he can answer to the extent he knows.
Would you repeat that?
Are you aware of the fact that in the absence of a definition in the statute, the law says that we turn to Webster's dictionary for the definition of the word?
I don't know.
Okay. Mr. Prince, are you referring to the word intersection?
Yes.
Okay, so, so you're asking him to opine on our statutes, or our ordinance?
No, he already said he didn't know whether or not there was a definition in your...
Okay, but do you know if there's a...
Yes, I do.
Okay, so, so we might have to, I'm not following where we're going with this, because if you're asking him, he doesn't know, and you do know that there is one in our ordinance...
No, there is not one in your ordinance.
Okay, and you know that for certain?
Well, as certain as I think I'm standing here answering the question.
Okay.
Let me put it this way, I couldn't find it.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we're all clear of what the, what the definition was.
If there is one, I wish it were to my attention. And Sharrak, I'm gonna have a lot of problems with these mics, so you'll forgive me in advance if you hear any bangs like that.
No problem.
Would you turn to drawing 30, which is sheet two of your 34? And on mine...
For which sheet?
Uh, sheet two.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see if this shows. I highlighted in yellow an entrance that appears here, which you have on your drawing right there, you see that?
Yes.
What is that entrance?
That is existing right-out movement of the BVA shopping center along Horseshoe Pike.
Doesn't that intersect with Route 322?
That is, if the premise is a definition of intersection, I don't know, but from an engineering standpoint, yes.
Okay.
From a functional standpoint.
Okay, and that's because a car coming out of BVA Shopping Center, from that exit, headed west on Route 322, is going to exit onto 322, sort of right in front of where you're proposing a deceleration lane, or as you call it, a right turn lane, right?
Yes.
Okay, now, I looked at drawing 21.02, which is sheet nine of 34, if I'm seeing that right.
Okay.
And what I'd like you to do, again in the book, on that sheet... And you're an engineer, so I'm sure you have a scale with you, I've never seen an engineer that doesn't carry a scale.
I do.
Okay, so would you scale on that drawing?
This one?
On that one, the B, the one we used before?
Yeah, Mr. Prince, that, the book is not going to be to scale, the plan in front...
I know that.
Would be the only thing to scale. There's no point of reference.
It is not to scale.
Would you scale on here, that entrance to BVA, that exit, excuse me?
The microphone that you keep hitting, is it on?
Yeah.
Can you move it?
Just get it to the top of the lecture, there we go.
Okay, so where do you want me to measure?
Oh, on this one, you have it.
Yep.
Well, would you show me why, where is it on the one that we have that's in the book? Because it's not on mine.
It's in there, it's just got, it's got graded out. Because it's gotten, when it went to multiple prints, the copier loses the toner. So see how these buildings? They're faint, it just got fainted out.
Okay, so it's at the end?
It's towards the edge of the page.
You have it here. And this lane that you have here...
Could you put this up on the screen?
Yeah, nobody's following what you're saying.
Okay, here we go. So the exit from BVA we're talking about is here?
Correct.
Yes.
And your deceleration lane, right turn lane, whatever we're gonna call it, is right here?
That's correct.
What I'd like you to scale for us, is if a car comes out of 322, at the point, at the 577 line, which you have marked, which is the beginning of the road, is that right?
I'm not sure, when you said beginning of the road, meaning...
Well, where it comes out on the Route 322, isn't that part of the highway, that line? Isn't it on the highway?
Yeah, this, this is the right of a...
Okay, so, but when it comes to this point, it's out of the right of way and on the highway, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So what is the distance from that point, which you have as gradient 576.73, did I read that right?
That's the inlet, that's the inlet grade elevation, yeah.
Yeah, from that line, assuming that line is horizontal and goes across 322, what is the distance from there to here, where your right turn lane starts?
When you say here, I am picking this point, are you, are you happy with that?
That's fine, yes.
Okay, it's 160 feet.
160 feet. How much distance does it take a car to accelerate to 55 miles an hour, if you know?
I don't know.
Okay. Have you ever come out of this exit from BVA onto 322? You yourself?
I don't remember if it was a long time ago.
What is the point of having a right turn lane?
I'm sorry?
What is the point of having a right turn lane?
Right turn lanes are the lanes where, which you get into to make a right turn. That's the purpose.
And why do we...
It's a dedicated right turn.
And why do we usually require them on highways, such as PennDOT does? Let me put it this way, is there a safety reason for doing that?
It's part of a traffic engineering, overall, signal design and intersection design. I'm a civil engineer, so I can only tell you what I think is required, I'm not an expert in traffic engineering, but the turn lanes are required such that the automobile gets in that lane to make a right turn, doesn't impede the traffic behind it, it doesn't create the slowdown. Had it not been there, you would go to the light, you'd have to make a hard right turn, the guy behind you has to stop. Not stop, but rather slow down.
And of course, if somebody's on the second lane and wants to make that turn, the right turn lane gives them a significantly longer distance in which to figure out they need to get over, correct?
Say that again, second lane, I'm not sure I understood.
How many lanes do you have going west?
At that point too, well, two plus the turning lane.
So if somebody's on the outside lane and suddenly decides, wait a minute, this is where I need to turn for my shopping center, they're gonna make a right turn quickly, aren't they?
Depends on the driver, but it's possible, yes, there's a striping, there's no barrier in there.
So it is possible, is it not, that you can have somebody exiting BVA onto a highway, confronting somebody trying to figure out when they want to get into the right lane in order to get into the new proposed Giant Shopping Center, right?
Do you rephrase that, please?
Sure.
I'm not sure I got it.
You said this distance between the start of the deceleration lane and the exit from BVA onto Route 322, is it 160 feet, was that your testimony?
Yes, yep, based on the distance you asked me to measure, yes.
So in that 160 feet, somebody exiting BVA has to come up to speed on the road, but you may have two people already on the road, one of whom wants to try and get into the right, to get into the Giant Shopping Center, isn't that possible?
I'm gonna object, this calls for speculation, and this gentleman is not a traffic engineer.
I'll move on. Would you please turn to drawing 21.02, sheet nine?
I have it.
Okay, let me move this.
Did you say nine or five?
Now I want to ask you about this drawing. This drawing is your stormwater information sheet, correct?
Yes.
And you have highlighted in yellow, strike that, these sheets that we're looking at, I take it these are yours?
These are mine, these highlights have my meaning, not, not for record purpose.
And that's why it has other notes on it that you've made?
Yes.
Okay. That have nothing to do with the plan?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, but it so happens, your highlighting helps me for my question. Looking at this line, what is that?
It's stormwater pipe that leads out of basin number one, and goes into the connector road, proposed connector road, further drains down onto the rear portion of the LNRP, is the condemned portion.
Okay.
Where it then discharges surface into a swell.
And that discharge line is coming from basin one, correct?
That is correct.
And it's also picking up stormwater discharge, if I'm reading your drawing correctly, from some of the rain gardens and drains to the south of there, within the Watcher's proposed development, is that right?
Would you say that again?
I'm gonna object to this line of questioning, it seems to be beyond the scope of direct examination. They ask specific questions about specific waivers and/or modifications, and I don't remember anything having to do with these pipes that Prince is talking about now.
Objection is irrelevant, because the plan, the whole plan's in front of this board, and this is not, the rules of evidence haven't applied all day long, and the issue of the plans has to do with whether or not the entire plan set complies with the ordinance. That is the issue in front of this board. Any question relevant to that is relevant to this procedure.
Who else would answer the stormwater?
May I respond?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. We agreed that we're all putting our objections in, and we're putting all the material in the record, and the board would take that all into consideration, or we wouldn't start from ground zero here. I put this man, I put Sharrak on to testify to certain waiver requests. I don't believe that there was any waiver request having to do with the pipes that Mr. Prince is now talking about.
Mr. Prince, is this related to a waiver, based on his testimony? Are you gonna get to a question relating to the waiver? Because I do agree that that's sort of what he was called to testify about.
Adam Solicitor, the Planning Commission referred to you a number of issues, including issues I raised in my correspondence, when you went over the list of exhibits, board exhibits, you referenced specifically, inter alia, the objections that I sent to the Planning Commission, which were referred to this board for decision.
Right.
Mr. Kaplan has presented his engineer who drew the plans. I didn't restrict him in terms of what he questioned his engineer about, but I have the right on cross-examination to examine this witness with regard to his plans, insofar as it relates to any objection that's presently pending before you, forwarded to you by the Planning Commission. Otherwise, if there's no testimony...
Okay, that's fine, go forward, ask the question.
Thank you.
That's, that's not what's been agreed to. I put this witness on for one purpose.
We're not confined to the rules of evidence with respect to that the questions on cross have to be related to the direct, that we're...
Well, then we're gonna be here for a week now.
Well, I'd rather him get it out now than it be appealed and say, remand it, because you didn't give an opportunity to ask a question.
He's had more than enough time.
Well, I would ask you to be quick and get to the points that you would like to make, if you can.
I am trying. Going back to our line, I don't think you answered the question, I think you were interrupted. The lines running from the Watcher's property in the south, many of them drain directly to this drainage line, that, as you put it, is on the southern portion of the condemned LNR property, is that right?
No.
No?
The lines that you are showing by pointing at them, they don't drain to that point, they go to that basin, basin number two.
Okay, so the only thing that's draining to this line is drainage from basin one?
The discharge from basin one.
Whose property is basin one on, just so the record is crystal clear?
Carlino property.
And basin one, would it be fair to say is the principal drainage facility for the Watcher's property?
Yes.
So if that's your basin, and that is draining only the Watcher's property, being basin one, why do you have a drainage line running onto LNR?
Why, meaning when the basin has to discharge, that is where the water flows in existing condition. That's the point where the water gets to. Based on the stormwater code, I have to hold the drainage areas and the drainage patterns, is the word, in the same direction, because that's where gravity's taking it. That's why the pipe is discharging to that point.
With this design, you have to do that?
With any design, if you want to comply with the code, yes, we have to do that.
Well, you can get a waiver, can't you? Can you apply for a waiver?
Objection is badgering the witness.
Let me ask it this way, couldn't you use subsurface storage on this facility? This being the Watcher's property?
Objection, what's the point? What's the point? If he could have used subsurface, what's the difference? There's nothing, there's nothing wrong with what he has done.
We're gonna have an objection at every question, we're gonna be here all night.
Mr. Prince, I agree with you, but I would ask that if you're trying to get to a point where you're pointing out that what they've designed doesn't meet the code section, then I think that's what you need to get to.
I'm going there.
Okay, please get there.
As I pointed out, there are other objections raised beyond the... As I pointed out, there are other objections raised beyond those.
But the only relevant, hold on, the only relevant point for this board is whether this plan before you and before the board meets the code section. So your question should really get to, is there something that doesn't meet a code section?
Madam, with due respect, you know, you're making comments that imply that you've made your decision.
I've not made any decisions, I'm not a decision maker. I can tell the board, excuse me, I can tell the board that the legal issue before them is whether the land development plan meets the code. Your line of questioning should be relevant to that point, and that's it.
It is, ma'am, it's relevant to whether-
It hasn't been yet, it hasn't been yet.
It's relevant to whether or not you can put a sewer line for a private developer and a water discharge line on land that belongs to the township.
That's a legal issue, that's a legal issue that this engineer is not gonna have-
I need to get the evidence of record, ma'am, or you'll say there's no evidence to support the allegation.
Evidence is on the plan, there's a sewer line shown, that's all that you have to show.
I beg your pardon?
You also raised, excuse me, you raised it in your plan objections, which is an exhibit. That is a legal issue that this board will dispose of in their decision. Shirag has nothing to do, none of his testimony will answer that question, it is a legal question, it's not an engineering question. Okay?
Does stormwater have to be contained on your own parcel, is that an ordinance?
No, that's not right.
Non-ordinance?
No, it's not right.
Perkins, did it discharge anywhere?
They're not discharging anywhere, they're discharging onto the township condemned property.
But it's not self-contained on this property?
It doesn't have to be, that's why the township property is part of this land development application.
Yeah, for the road, not for-
No, the road water's going into the basin on the condemned property.
May I go on?
Yeah, but again, I would ask that the questions relate to engineering issues for this engineer as to why the plan, in your opinion, doesn't meet the code. That's what's relevant.
That's what I'm doing, ma'am.
Not legal issues, engineering issues.
That's what I'm doing, ma'am.
Asking him if he could have done it a different way doesn't address whether this plan complies with the ordinance.
It does, he's asking if it's self-contained on his parcel.
I'm not addressing that point, I understand.
All right, just ask your question, go ahead.
Shirag, turning to drawing 23, Sheet 23. What is this?
That's the proposed sanitary sewer line.
And that sewer line runs where?
That sewer line runs southeast along the rear property line of BVA, and then goes into Guthrie'sville Road, then follows Guthrie'sville Road south, turns east and goes into Brookhaven Lane.
Did you participate in the documentation that was prepared and submitted for the NPDES permit that was granted for this development in 2015 or 16, whenever it was?
Yes.
Isn't the last-
The 2015 NPDES permit or the current NPDES permit are not part of the question that Kristen has raised. That's a separate outside permit that has to be obtained from another agency.
Now, Shirag, the NPDES permit that's currently in place for this property, isn't that for a force main?
Are you asking me? Okay.
No, it's not.
You're sure of that?
NPDES permit, you said?
NPDES is stormwater. That's the DEP sewer module that's in place.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And the permit granted, isn't it for a force main?
I do not know with certainty, I'm not the sewer engineer for the project.
Well, didn't you participate in the drafting of the application?
No, it was done by Ebert Engineering.
Okay. You've seen it though, haven't you?
Yep, I-
B-13 is a letter of November 8th from Ebert Engineering addressed to DEP, and they're asking for an update of the planning module. That document was not drafted by this witness. B-13. So as far as I understand, the status of the planning module is that the applicant is still requesting something from DEP, whether it's confirmation that a prior planning module is still valid for this current plan, or a letter from DEP giving exemption for planning. That's what I read November 8th, 2018, letter from Ebert asking for. So my recommendation to the board is that that would have to be a condition of approval. Something in confirmation, some confirmation from DEP that they have planning module approval that applies to the 2018 plan. I don't think that's been demonstrated in the record today.
I appreciate your comments, but that's not the point I'm trying to get at.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, I think it's relevant to the question you were asking him as to whether it was for a force main, or this or that.
I want to show you the August 26, 2014, PennDOT, excuse me, DEP, letter issued by certified mail to Mr. Pierceall, which addresses the current approval for this property for sewage disposal.
Objection, it's not the current approval. Look at 13, look at 13, there's a June 30, 2017, DEP approval that approves a request to switch from a force main to gravity sewer. So what Mr. Prince is portraying as the current approval is not the current approval.
It is the only module approval that they have. They have an application, that was the point of the November 8th letter that was submitted. The purpose of submitting that letter by Ebert Engineering was to secure module approval for a gravity system. The current approval that is in place, and that was granted in June of 17 on the last plan, was for a force main system. That is the only approval that exists. The point is, ma'am, what I'm trying to make is that if you look at the plans that are in front of you, every single one of these shows a gravity system. It is based on the premise that they have approval for a gravity system, when the only approval in place is for a force main, and these plans do not show the force main system.
Objection.
Mr. Prince, I just said, that's why I said, that this board understands, based on B-13, that something further has to come from DEP.
But let's be clear, what Mr. Prince is saying is wrong. Look at-
June 30th, 2017, letter which is attached to B-13, I agree.
This letter is in reference to your application for sewage facilities planning module to connect a proposed shopping center to public sewers via gravity sewer instead of a pump station and a force main. In 2014, it was approved with a force main, in 2017, it was changed and approved to a gravity sewer, and the application now before DEP is merely to remove the, change the number of gallons because the removal of the bank. What Mr. Prince is saying is just fallacious.
But again, my-
There's a letter from DEP saying that they approve the current plan and the current layout with a gravity lawn. There is no such letter.
Here it is, here it is.
Do you have the letter of June 30th, Mr. Prince? It's attached to B-13, so look in the binder.
2017?
Yes.
Yes, it was on the old plan, not on this plan.
Okay, and my point that I said though, was, my advice to this board is that there still needs to be something from DEP to either approve the planning module for this plan with the number of gallons they're proposing, or an exemption from planning. Right now, there's nothing the township has from DEP that does that. That would have to be a condition of approval. There's been no response that I'm aware of to Mr. Ebert's letter to John Benzielli of November 8th, 2018.
I agree with that.
So something has to come, and that will-
We have an exemption, we have an exemption, and all that we have asked for is a reduction in the number of gallons.
You need a response to DEP from the letter of November 8th, 2018.
We have no problem with that.
Thank you.
May I move on?
Please do.
I'm gonna use this one, Shirag, this is Sheet 5, drawing 20, for one of a cleaner copy. I want you to look at this, Shirag. You have a label here that says 20-foot wide PROP, sanitary sewer easement, and the easement runs through the property, is that correct?
Runs through the rear side of proposed Giant Building, correct.
Who is that easement for?
For sanitary sewer.
For whom?
It is, I'm sorry?
For whom? It says it's an easement, who is the beneficiary of the easement?
I'm not 100% sure, but it would be the municipal sewer authority.
I beg your pardon, why would it be them, there's no sewer line back there?
This is proposed, PROP means proposed. It's not existing, it is proposed.
Well, when Mr., and I will offer the testimony as an exhibit, when Mr. Oost-
Esti.
Mr. Esti, thank you, testified under oath with regard to this, and was specifically asked whether there was any such easement that the municipal authority was aware of, his answer was no.
Mr. Prince, but this again, and I think this goes to your legal issue that I understand you raised, that you believe because there's a sewer line on the condemned property in the rear, that that makes it be-
Private use.
Yeah, private use and abandoned property and whatever. You don't need Mr. Shirag's testimony for that, the plan shows that.
No, ma'am, that's not it.
Okay, what are you showing him?
There is no sewer line in this easement. This easement shows a proposed 20-foot wide sanitary sewer easement, and it does not designate who is the beneficiary.
Which, maybe if you point on the plan to this easement, I thought you were talking about the easement on the LNR property.
It's right here.
Okay, so what is your question to him about?
What sheet are you on, I wanna see this sheet.
I'm on Sheet 5, you can actually find it on- Let me see if I can find a clearer one for you.
It's right there.
Here.
This is the proposed sewer easement.
This is the sewer easement. For what? Who is the beneficiary? There's no sewer line in it. So it's certainly not a sewer easement for Waters', and it's not a sewer easement for this development.
What's the point? Does it violate the ordinance because it says there's an easement on there?
Well, the point I can make very clear, Mr. Kaplan, let me read your testimony answering that question, page 184 of the notes of testimony of the hearing.
But isn't this cross-examination of this witness, would this be part of your case? Right, I mean, you're cross-examining this witness, I'm not sure how you reading somebody else's testimony is cross-examining him, it just doesn't seem out of order.
I'm answering Mr. Kaplan only with regard to the relevance, if you don't want me to do that now, Fana, I won't.
Well, it just seems out of order, but, I mean-
I'm just trying, avoiding going again and going through this all over again, or calling Mr. Kaplan, I'm trying to eliminate it from being as-
That's so disingenuous.
So going back, you asked, let's stick to where we started here, you asked him who the beneficiary of the sewer-
Yeah, and he says he doesn't know.
Okay, so I think it's asked and answered.
Is that correct? You don't know?
That is correct.
Who told you to put it on there?
I believe it was, if I recollect it, it was in the review letter from Hydroterra, a long time ago. This is carried from the old plans.
Well, I went back and looked at your plan that you submitted, that was the plan that went before Judge Negoor originally in 2011, and it's not on there.
Objection, so what?
I'm asking, he said it was carried.
This is not relevant to anything. Don't bold as ask us at a point to put-
Objection to more testing.
Let's stick with questions of this witness, do you have a question of this witness? Let's try to stay on point.
Shirag, it's not on the 2011 plan.
I don't recall 2011, but it has been on one of the older plans. Now, I don't have copies of old plans, but it was, I distinctly remember one item where Hydroterra had asked to put, extend the sanitary manhole all the way to that edge of the Waters' property. And I don't have the drawings with me, but I can, that's something that I remember.
And Mr. Prince, can you get to the relevant point of why you believe showing that on this current plan, which is before the board, does or doesn't meet a code requirement?
Why do I think it's relevant?
To whether or not this plan should be approved, yes, please get to that point.
Well, the point is argument, are you asking me to explain that to you now? I will.
But if it's argument, why are you asking, what factual testimony do you need from him to make that legal argument? I'm not understanding that.
I just laid the factual testimony to the extent he can give it to me. The easement is there.
Okay, move on.
He doesn't know where it came from, he doesn't know why it's there, and so-
That's not true, he said it came from a response to Hydroterra, is what his answer was.
He thought, that's conjecture. Madam, you know better than that, you've been a lawyer long enough. This is the sewer line you're referring to?
That's the proposed sewer line.
Are you responsible or participating in the development of Meadow Wood adjacent to this property?
No.
I'll call Meadow Wood.
That is the Meadow Wood development on that side, isn't it?
Maple View.
Maple View, I think.
Thank you. That is the Maplewood on that side.
Maple View.
Maple View.
Yes.
Little stutter, sorry. In the MOU... I want to show you a copy of the MOU entered August 20th, 2014.
Objection, objection as to relevance.
I would agree.
I haven't even asked a question, what kind of report is this?
Mr. Prince, I don't see how a question on an MOU, which is a legal document, is relevant to this engineer's testimony on a plan.
How could you possibly know if you don't allow me to ask the question? Maybe if you'd allow me to ask the question, then you would understand it.
When there was an objection raised, we can ask an offer of proof for what you're-
You can't legally have an objection before the question is completed. What is he objecting to? I didn't ask the question.
I'm objecting to-
I mean, that's basic cornbook law.
No, I'm objecting to you introducing the MOU to this engineer, whatever your question is, it has nothing to do with this engineer's testimony today.
Right, and I would agree with that, unless you give us an offer of proof of what, how asking him a question about a legal agreement is relevant to plan approval.
Same issue we've addressed before, there have been objections raised other than the waivers, and I want to ask something about a provision in the MOU that is specifically on point with a particular section of your ordinance.
Well, what section?
You wouldn't allow me to finish the question, may I finish the question?
No, we want to know what section, I don't believe you.
The point, yeah, exactly, the point of the offer proofs, tell me right now, what section of the code?
350-34E.
Okay, and what specifically about that section?
Read the section of the MOU and you'll understand, paragraph 8.
I don't have the MOU in front of me.
The MOU is-
Allow me to show it to you.
I have it highlighted, now you'll understand what I want to ask for the question.
Wendy's 100% right, if he wants to put this in as part of his testimony and mark it and exhibit, but just to pull it out and shove it in front of the witness's face is ridiculous. Let me see that if you're gonna show it to him.
I would sustain the objection, I think if you want to bring it forward in your case and bring out a point about the MOU and offer the MOU as evidence, you can do that in your case. This witness did not draft the MOU, this witness did not participate in the drafting MOU, it's a legal document, it has legal implications, it's not an engineering document. Your question should be limited to-
Shirag, did you seek a waiver for Section 350-34E of the SADA?
Why is he asking that question? There's a documented evidence that shows all of the waivers or modifications. Look at the document, point him to the document.
There's an objection, Madam Solicitor.
He can look at his letter, or Mark's letter, which was marked B8, B7, and tell him the section again. I mean, we can all do that ourselves, I don't think you need him to testify to it. The waivers that they've requested are outlined in Exhibit B7.
350-34E.
Yes, we did.
Did you ask for any other waivers beyond that?
Yes, we are asking other waivers and modifications, like I testified all this morning.
Just a minute. Shirog, I want to show you section 350-36 that you talked about previously. And that's the township section on acceleration, deceleration, and turning lanes, correct?
Yes.
And you've asked for a waiver of a section, a subsection of this section, correct?
That is correct.
Which one?
It is, I can find it, one second. It's 350-36B, as in boy, deceleration lane requirements.
Okay. What is the speed on 322? The design speed?
I believe it's 35.
So, in accordance with the ordinance section, the minimum deceleration lane length is somewhere 165 up to 275?
Yep. 165 is for 30 miles per hour, 275 feet is for 40 miles per hour.
Are you aware, I'll strike that. To your knowledge, does PennDOT have a minimum deceleration lane length requirement?
I don't know with certainty. I'm not a traffic engineer.
Is the lane in question that you designed as long as section 350-36 requires?
Say that again, I'm sorry?
Is the deceleration lane that you are designing as long as ordinance requires? Or is it the length that necessitates the waiver?
I am confused.
Okay. Why are you asking for a waiver of this section?
We are requesting the waiver from this section because we, there is physically not enough room between the proposed intersection and the existing BVA right out driveway to provide the required deceleration length required under section 350-36B as in boy.
So, how long is the deceleration lane that you're proposing?
Deceleration lane is 200 feet and a 75-foot taper is proposed.
So this, looking at sheet five of 34, is 275 feet long?
Yeah, it would be from, it could be from the stop part of that.
No, you gotta, you gotta talk up and-
Yeah, and you gotta, there's a book on the plan, if you could lift the book off the plan and mark where you're pointing to.
Okay.
The dimension you're pointing to.
So, based on the HOP plans prepared to date, the distance from there, from that point, which is the stop bar, all the way to the back where the taper starts, see the taper goes 75 feet, then it, then it straightens out. That distance is 200 plus 75, so a total of 275.
So I'm confused, then you would meet 350-36B3 if that's what you were pointing to, for a 30-
Because the taper is not a full lane.
Okay.
And without the taper, how long is it?
200.
And that's why you're requesting the waiver then?
That is correct.
Okay.
What is the minimum distance of separation between intersections? That is to say, what should be the minimum between the intersection that you're proposing with 322 and BVA's intersection, the right lane coming out?
Based on what?
Yeah, based on whose standards, Mr. Prince? Are you saying based on PennDOT standards or ba-
No ma'am, I'm asking him-
Well, he needs to know which standards. I mean, you're establishing rules, but he doesn't know which rules you're asking him to follow.
I didn't ask about a rule. Would you repeat the question I asked? It's asking you about the 350-35C waiver? I believe 1,000 feet is required, is that right, Shirog?
I'm sorry, which one, what section was that?
350-35C.
350-35C.
When you were discussing 350-36B, you pointed out that you had a problem with that.
There is, we are not requesting a waiver from section 350-35C as a Charlie, as it, we don't have a situation. What you are referring to is a driveway intersection, not a street intersection.
I asked you about that before when we, when I started, and you said you did consider it an intersection.
I don't believe that's true.
I did not-
I don't believe that's true.
I did not say that. I said, because you started with the, what is the definition of intersection, what I told you was that minus the Webster dictionary definition of intersection, from a practical point of view, as the, as the driveway comes in, yes, it is an intersection. What you are referring to, let me finish. What you are referring to under section 350-35 is clearly a street intersection. It is actually titled "street intersection." There is no dispute whether it is related to a driveway or a street. 1,000 feet is required between two streets.
Will you agree with me that 322 is an arterial street?
322 is a arterial street. I agree with that.
Well, I have 350-35C in front of me and it reads in full, "To the fullest extent possible, comma, intersections with arterial streets shall be located not less than 1,000 feet apart, measured from center line to center line." Did I read that right?
Yes.
And I'm asking you, using the very words of that ordinance, from center line of the exit to 322 from BVA, to the center line of your proposed new entrance, is it at least 1,000 feet?
From-
It's a yes or no, Shirog.
No, it is not 1,000 feet, but I am not sure if I'm getting the question correctly. Are you talking about this?
Let me point it out to you so there'll be no confusion. From here to here. Is that 1,000 feet?
It's not.
Thank you. Now, Shirog. It's not 1,000 feet, but you didn't ask for a waiver of that section, did you?
No, we did not.
Okay, now-
It's not required. That is what I was trying to get at. The driveway that you are showing me, the right-in, right-out driveway of the BVA shopping center, is not a street.
Isn't that for the board to determine?
Well, you're asking me, so I'm answering, I'm sorry, but-
But the section doesn't say that. The section says from center line and to center line.
But the section is titled "street intersections." That whole subsection deals with street intersections. This is my opinion.
Okay. This property was originally developed by Gambon. Proposed development by Gambon, and Gambon drew a whole set of plans. Did you ever see the Gambon plans, including the Gambon topographic for the entire property?
Objection, irrelevant. What's that got to do with the plans that are here before us? And whether or not the plans comply, or whether or not we're entitled to the waivers that we have requested?
I would agree on that.
I would too. Mr. Prince, how is it relevant?
Shirog testified that he could not comply with the requirements of 350-24B3 and needed a waiver because it was somebody else's property, and I guess he figured he couldn't go on it. So he says he can identify the utilities there on any of the properties within 300 feet of the property, but the Gambon plans did just that. So I'm asking, may I finish, Mr. Kaplan? You have a rude habit of interrupting.
Because you don't know how to follow the rules.
All right, all right, all right.
Finish it.
Finish your statement.
The Gambon plans addressed that and showed the utilities and features, et cetera. Pursuant to the agreement that Gambon had with the Waters, he had to return those plans to Mr. Kaplan.
Mr. Prince, that's not-
Mr. Kaplan has them.
That's not relevant.
I'm asking Shirog if he ever saw them.
I would, I would sustain the objection. That's not relevant. We have no idea how Gambon got approval to go on somebody else's land. They're not the applicant. You heard him testify that they, this applicant did not have permission to go on somebody else's land to comply with that section of the ordinance.
Did you ask anybody for permission to go on their land?
No, I did not.
So that's an assumption on your part?
It is, well, I can't just step on somebody's property. Yes, it is my opinion that I cannot just step on somebody's property without their consent.
But you're asking for a waiver from a requirement that you say you couldn't fulfill because you would have had to step on somebody else's property, and you didn't want to do that without asking, but you didn't ask, did you?
We haven't asked, correct.
I'm a little confused on your explanation on 350 dot 34E, why you need a waiver. I understand what you were saying about the elevation of the property in chief. And if I understood you correctly, what you said was that all of this would need to be raised, and the building would need to be raised. Am I interpreting that correctly?
I'm sorry, what section were you at?
Paragraph three of Mr. Kaplan's letter. 350-34E.
34E as an elephant. Yep, okay, I have it.
You said the grade of the property would have to be raised.
Well-
And that you would have to raise the land and the building, and that that would then require a waiver for the back driveway. Did I accurately repeat what you testified to?
Yes.
So my question is-
I also said along the way that we don't believe we need a waiver from this section because it is related to street and not a driveway. But Judge Negaer requested Carlino to seek this waiver, hence we were requesting it.
Well, actually, I don't think he did, but leave that aside. What prevents you from an elevated road exit?
What does that mean? I'm sorry.
Well, you've testified that this area of the plan is low, correct?
Yes, it is.
That it's actually sloping away from the road.
Correct.
What's to prevent you, if this is the land, your land, here's the parking lot, what's to prevent you from an exit that rises to 322?
It does rise, that's the waiver. It does rise. It does rise.
But the point is, you don't want to make it longer in order to meet the slope, is that right?
Say that again?
What is the waiver that you're requesting?
We are requesting a waiver from a percentage slope of a driveway.
And couldn't you meet the percentage slope if you used an elevated driveway that was longer?
Elevated driveway that was longer?
Mm-hmm. You, if you lengthen the road, don't you lower the issue of the rise?
Which road are you talking about, Mr. Prince?
He's talking about the exit.
The driveway you're talking about. Okay, so what you are saying is that instead of taking this, raise this whole thing?
Yes.
Okay.
Grade it up. Wouldn't that have gotten around the issue?
No.
You're satisfied that couldn't work?
No, because, I'll tell you, the difference here is two and a half feet of vertical grade. If I just raise this area, the parking lot will become 10%. In order to absorb that much vertical grade within this, you'd end up with a 10% slope. It would be, and with shopping carts, driveways, cars, I think it would be problematic.
But my question was-
It wouldn't be a good design.
But my question was, couldn't you just do that, but just addressing the issue of the drive itself, not the parking area?
The drive is connected into the parking lot.
Let me give you an example. Are you familiar with King of Prussia? With the shopping center of King of Prussia?
Which one?
The big one.
The mall? You mean the mall? Yes.
You know where the parking garage is for the Lord &amp; Taylor's? Behind Lord &amp; Taylor's, the high-rise garage?
Not really.
You're not familiar?
I don't go there all the time, so I don't know.
Let's move on. Now, I understand your objection to 350-40C and 350-40N2. It's essentially that this plan, this design, requires a waiver. Is that right?
What section was that?
Well, look at 350-40N2.
N2? Which is, okay, number five. N2?
N2 is dealing with 25-foot versus 30-foot radius.
Yes, 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 okay, I have it.
Okay. And as I understood your answer to Mr. Orlando, and you correct me if I'm wrong, you said that the problem was up here with LNR, the road on LNR, and in order to address that, you could not do it and meet the 30 and come to the current exit point from the Carlino property. You would have to change the road on the Carlino property, is that right?
No.
No?
No, this section, N2, 350, 350-40N2 deals with the radius, minimum radius of the curve, not of the center line of the road.
I understand that, but you said, and if I'm wrong, please correct me, you said that to change it to 30 feet, to comply, you would need to change the road location.
That was an hypothetical that Mr. Orlando was asking me.
That isn't-
My, my, yeah, what he was asking me was to shift the road, jog it five or 10 feet, such that a 30-foot radius could be accommodated on the two locations where we currently have 25-foot minimum.
And you said that if you did that, it wouldn't fit within the condemned area, correct?
Yes, because the alignment would be off.
And you're talking about this alignment?
The whole alignment.
So what if you started there?
Mr. Prince, slide the map down, please, so we can see.
Sorry.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
A little more.
What if you started here?
Still can't see it.
Right there.
Thank you, Luke. What if you started there, and you came down this way? And as I understood your argument, it was at this point that there would be a problem, and you drew a curve. Remember that one you drew on the plan?
Yes.
And you showed it coming and crossing the corner of BVA's property. Do we need to go back to that to show you?
No, I remember what you're saying.
Do you remember that? Isn't it true that you could start here at Quail Hill, and you could come down like this with a road design that would satisfy that statutory section and eliminate the need for that waiver?
I am not sure. I, because when you were pointing with a finger as to, we, now we are approximating here, what you were saying is that can you somehow draw a road that would then come down, come in between these two pinch points, mind you that the existing driveway on BVA's rear property's got to be honored because it exists. You come down here and somehow navigate into the site and out.
You agree?
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
I don't know if that is feasible or not.
But it might be possible.
Don't know. Because as I was explaining, Mr. Orlando, to get a road on a plan with two-dimensional line is a totally different thing than to engineer it, sidewalk it, side distance it, landscape it. So, it is very hard for me to say, well, can this hypothetical idea work or not? Because you, there is no way to say it with confidence. There is no, nobody, no engineer can tell you that.
And you didn't attempt to do that, did you?
No, we have not engineered a plan that ties the proposed connector road at a four-way intersection to Quail Hill Lane.
And you haven't attempted to design one that could meet that requirement? You've only been dealing with this design since Arna's been handling this, correct?
Yes, that's, this is the only design that we have prepared and submitted to the township.
And you...
Meaning, only meaning this set.
And you have comprised this list of waivers that you submitted? I understand Mr. Kaplan submitted a later one, very similar to yours. This list of waivers that you compiled are waivers based on this particular road you designed, right?
This particular, so there's correction. This particular road that has been on the books for a very long time, the location of which was determined by the township.
Well, that's not true. So, let's not politicize it. I'm asking you very simply, did you design your waiver list? Did you prepare your waiver list based on this particular road design?
Yes. I mean, the waiver is for this plan, so yes, of course.
You also said, and I just want to understand it on that same point. And I think you were talking about this area up here where you said, "Well, it would require us to go over BVA's property." You said, "BVA refused to allow us to change this." What did you mean by that?
I am not sure what you're saying. Change this? What does this mean?
I don't know. I was writing as fast as I could. You were talking. Is there anything that you requested BVA to change to facilitate your road that BVA refused to do?
I'm not recollecting as to what part of my testimony you're referring to.
Let me put it this way. Did you send me any requests in writing asking BVA to allow you to use a portion of its property?
I did not, but that would not have come from me. It would come from Mark Kaplan's office.
But I'm asking you, you're the witness. You didn't send any to him.
I answered that, correct. I did not.
350 dot 47B2.
Mr. Prince, after this question, we're going to take a five-minute recess.
Okay. I don't want to belabor this too much. I understood your argument. I understood what you said, that, oh, it's sewage out, and so it's going to a public facility, and there'd be no need for sewage to come back. But the section doesn't deal with sewage. It deals with effluent, doesn't it?
I said effluent.
Okay. What is effluent? I mean, if you know. I understand you're just a civil engineer. You're not a sewer engineer, so if you can...
Thank you.
Provide a definition of effluent, I'd be happy to have it.
I do not know the definition of an effluent, but I generally know what an effluent means. An effluent, in my mind, in my opinion, is sewage that is treated, this is post-treated sewage, is an effluent.
That's a good way to put it. So, you know, the ordinance says that post-treated sewage, to use your explanation, the residue waste is supposed to go back onto the property for disposal. Isn't that what it says?
This is another legal argument.
It's an engineering matter, ma'am. It's an engineering regulation I'm asking him about.
The engineer testified the facts involved in this. Mr. Prince is now going to argue with him over what the ordinance says and what the interpretation doing.
And you've asked for a waiver. So, he asked for a waiver. So, what else do you need from him to, I mean, he's asked for the waiver. He recognizes this plan does not meet that code requirement.
I want to pursue that waiver question. May I? Why did you ask for a waiver?
I believe I testified in my direct as to why. The reason we are requesting a waiver is because this project is served by public sewer. In that, I mean that there is no effluent coming back to this site.
The property next door of Maple View, isn't that served by public sewer? If you know?
I don't know.
So what? We're not here on Maple View. We're here on this plan.
You know of any property surrounding this property that the township has approved plans for where effluent disposal was not required?
Yeah.
I don't know.
As I understand it, then, the only reason that you can't deal, you want the waiver, excuse me, is because you don't want to put the effluent disposal on this property. Is that right?
Incorrect. There is no effluent coming here, Mr. Prince. It is, it is, it is, nothing's coming here. What are we going to have the disposal area for? That is what I was saying.
Sharron, the point of the section is to require the equivalent effluent from your sewage disposal to be disposed of on-site. It's much in the nature of a drying bed. So, I'm asking you, you're asking for a waiver.
And he's answered the question. You've asked him several times, and he's answered it. You don't like the answer he's giving.
He's now characterizing the ordinance and what he thinks the ordinance says. We're way past this.
It's been asked and answered several times.
But you put the sewage effluent on this site as designed.
Objection. He's badgering the witness. Get him to move on.
Agreed. He answered it to the best of his ability. He did answer it to the best of his ability. All right, so we're going to take a five-minute break now, and then we'll proceed with the next question when we come back. It's 10 of right now, so it's, we convene at 5 of, 5 of 3.